Good evening. The Board of Trustees of Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District is now convened in a special call meeting on Thursday, December 5, 2013, in the boardroom of the Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District Instructional Support Center, 10,300 Jones Road, Houston, Texas at 6:00 PM. I wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers to this meeting of the Board of Trustees. The meeting is open to all who wish to attend and hear the matters discussed. During the course of this meeting, the Board may determine that a closed session is necessary. In that event, the Board will meet in closed session to consider matters duly posted for this meeting as permitted by Section 551.071 to 551.084 inclusive of the Texas Government Code. The purpose of this special called meeting is to administer the oath of office to our newly elected trustees and to reorganize the Board of Trustees. Dr. Henry?
I think at this time Ms. Blowie will administer the oath of office to those who were elected. John, Don?
Okay. Please raise your right hand. Do you, John Ogletree, Don Ryan, and Bob Covey solemnly swear to faithfully execute the duties of the Office of Trustee of the Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District and the State of Texas, and will to the best of your ability preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of the State of Texas, so help you God?
I do.
By the authority vested in me as a notary public for the State of Texas, I declare you a duly sworn officer of the Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District Board of Trustees. Congratulations.
The election of the officers for the 2013-2014 Cypress Fairbanks Board of Trustees shall begin. In accordance with the Texas Education Code 11.061(c) and Board Policy BDAA Local, nominations shall be accepted for the offices of President, Vice President, and Secretary. The offices will be elected in that order. I will serve as Chair until the President is elected. At that time, the newly elected President shall preside over the election of the offices of Vice President and Secretary. Once each office is announced and the floor has been opened for nominations, any Board member may place a name and nomination without being recognized. No second is required. After determining that no further names are to be placed in nomination, the Chair will declare the nominations closed. Each nominee will be voted upon in the order that the name was placed in nomination. All in favor will ask to signify by raising their right hand. If a majority of those present and voting is achieved, no further votes for this office will be taken. If no majority is achieved, the next name placed in nomination shall be voted upon and so on until the office is filled. Before we begin, are there any questions about the procedure? Thank you. The floor is now open for the Office of President of the Board of Trustees. Do we have any nominations?
Mr. President, I nominate Don Ryan for the position of President.
All right. Mr. Ryan, are there any other nominations? Then we will call the list complete. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. Unanimous. And, Mr. President, will please continue with the election of Vice President and Secretary.
Thank you, Bob. The floor is now open for Vice President of the Board of Trustees. May I have a nomination, please?
Mr. President, I am pleased to nominate Tom Jackson for the Office of Vice President of the Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District Board of Trustees. I made that long because Tom, you know, deserves it.
Asked you to do that. You said it just like Tom wrote it. That's what's so awesome.
He's a man replete with superlatives, so I didn't want to short him at all.
Understood. Understood. Any other nominees? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous. The floor is now open for Secretary of the Board of Trustees. May I have a nomination?
Mr. President, I would like to nominate Christine Hartley as Secretary.
Any other nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. As there is no further business, the special called meeting is adjourned. The Committee of the Whole Meeting will convene in a few moments. Thank you. The Board will consider approving use of existing facsimile signatures on all checks until the new plates for the 2012-13 Board of Trustees Officers are received.
13-14.
Well, whoever wrote it, wrote it wrong.
We were wrong on that agenda.
Okay, 13-14. I need a nomination, please?
I say move.
Second, anyone?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. There we go. Thank you. Now the special called meeting is adjourned.
There you go.
Right, Stuart? Okay. Just checking. Just checking. Hey, give us just one second. The Board of Trustees of Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District is now convened in a Committee of the Whole Meeting on Thursday, December 5, 2013, in the boardroom of the Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District Instructional Support Center, 10,300 Jones Road, excuse me, Houston, Texas at 6:00 PM, for the purpose of reviewing that portion of the December 9, 2013, school board agenda designated as action items and to hear designated reports and recognitions posted in the meeting notice as required by Texas law. No action will be taken at this meeting. I want to welcome the members of our audience and our television viewers to this meeting of the Board of Trustees. As the Cypress Fairbanks Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports, approve budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. It is not the role of the Board to make day-to-day operational decisions. The management and day-to-day operations of the district are the responsibility of the superintendent. We have policies and procedures in place to resolve concerns and issues. This is a public meeting of the Board of Trustees, not a meeting of the public. Prior to this meeting, Board members received information related to items on tonight's agenda. Agenda items will not necessarily be handled in the order listed on the notice. The meeting is open to all who wish to attend and hear the matters discussed. During the course of this meeting, the Board may determine that a closed session is necessary. In that event, the Board will meet in closed session to consider matters duly posted for this meeting as permitted by Section 551.071 to 551.084 inclusive of the Texas Government Code. These proceedings are airing live on CFTV Channel 16 and CFTV Online on the district website. They will also be rebroadcast throughout the month on Channel 16 and available as video on demand on the website. For the tape to adequately reflect the proceedings, I respectfully ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking and that cell phones are turned off or in silent mode. Thank you for taking the time to join us this evening and for your interest in the Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District. Before we begin, I want to recognize our AVP students from Cyfair High School, who, by the way, is playing this Saturday in football playoffs, if y'all didn't know that. Just want to throw that out there. A little BFND action. Sarah Epley, Clarissa Herrera, Jonathan Sanchez, and the AVP teacher at Cyfair is Kevin Corkin. And then, okay, thank you. Also want to recognize, we have three of our CLC members here in the audience. Craig Sharp, Chuck Bramman, and Kelly Ray, if you guys would stand up.
Debbie Black.
And Debbie Blacksher. Oh, there. Hey, hey. Thank you, guys, for coming tonight. Yeah, we will now move on to the special recognition portion of the agenda. Dr. Henry, I think you have one that you'd like to do?
Yes. Before the meeting, our Board of Trustees and some of our administrators were able to enjoy some of the work of our culinary arts students here in Cyfair ISD. In the Fourth Annual Region Four Hospitality Educator Association of Texas Cupcake Battle that was held on November 2 in Goose Creek ISD, there were 66 entries from throughout Region Four. Cyfair ISD students swept the top three spots, qualifying them for the state competition April 26 in Allen, Texas. First place went to Senior Kiona Chazinski from Cyfair Culinary Academy with her pumpkin-spiced cupcake with orange zest icing. Second was Junior Shelby Ritchie from Cywoods with her chocolate-covered cherries cupcake. And in third place was Junior Ashley Azundu from Cy Lakes with her banana nut cupcake. Also winning the top prize for best presentation was Senior Lena Tron from CyRidge with her cool mint cupcake display. And as I said earlier, our Board members were able to enjoy these before the meeting tonight, and certainly, I know they, along with myself, appreciate their hard work and sharing their exciting, winning entries with us before the meeting this evening. So, thank you very much to the Culinary Arts students.
Thank you, Dr. Henry. Would have brought them out to share with the audience, but we're taking them home. Agenda Item 1A, the Board will recognize Harris County Municipal Utility District Number 168 and Harris County Municipal Utility District Number 29 for their donations of funds for purchase and installation of playground equipment at Emmett Elementary School. The presenter, I believe, is going to be Mr. Roy Sprague. Roy?
Thank you, Mr. Ryan, members of the Board, Dr. Henry. It is our honor tonight to have this opportunity to recognize Harris County Municipal Utility District Number 168, as well as Northwest Municipal Utility District Number 29, that's a big mouthful, say those names, for their very generous support to our school district and more specifically for Emmett Elementary School. Mud 168 has been making various donations over the years since 1997 that total $113,634 for various improvements that included a new asphalt track, some track repairs, along with new recreational and playground equipment. Their most recent donation is $40,000 for new playground equipment. Northwest Mud Number 29 is donating a total of $5,000 towards the cost of new playground equipment through an interlocal agreement, which is later on our Board agenda tonight for consideration for Board approval. We are so very fortunate to have such tremendous financial support from these two mud districts to fund these special-type projects to support our students as well as our Emmett campus community. We have the following representatives from each of the muds here tonight to present our certificate of appreciation, and when I call your name, please come forward so we can recognize you. For Mud 168, we have Mr. Tom Tanis. He's the President. We have Mr. Jim Bush, Vice President. And for Mud Number 29, we have Mr. Douglas Wearing, Secretary. Let's give them a round of applause for their support and their recognition. We'd also like to recognize and thank our Emmett Principal, Jessica Hernandez, who's here tonight, two of her parents, Brooke Hawkins and Mr. Greg Soap with the PTO, and I'd also like to thank Mr. Claude Yost, who are all instrumental in working very collaboratively with the muds for the success of these projects. So, thank y'all. Thank you, Mr. Ryan.
Thank you, Roy. And again, to the mud representatives, thank you so much for your generosity. For those of you that haven't had the chance to go by and see what's been done at Emmett, it really is awesome, and it's not just a playground for Emmett, or, I mean, the entire community in the Steeplechase area uses that facility, and you guys, that was very nice and very needed, so thank you very much. The Board will hear the following report. Agenda Item 4A. In accordance with Texas Education Code and State Board of Education Regulations, the President of the Board shall announce the name of each Board member who has completed, exceeded, or who is deficient in the continuing education required under state law. All Board of Trustees completed or exceeded the continuing education requirements required under state law. Agenda Item 4B. The Administration will provide a report on the new district logo. Presenter, Nicole Ray.
President Ryan, members of the Board, and Dr. Henry, I am here tonight to unveil to you the new district logo, and we've recently achieved our goal of coming up with a new vision and mission statement for the district, and most of you have seen that, and I'm going to give it just a minute to load up so that we can take a look at it real quick. This has been a very exciting project. We've had lots of folks involved in the design of this, so let me show you. So, our new vision and mission, lead, empower, achieve, and dream. Our mission is we maximize every student's potential through rigorous and relevant learning experiences, preparing students to be 21st century global leaders. So, now that we've completed that task, we've moved on to the next phase, which is creating a logo that captures the innovative vision of the district. We've taken this job very seriously, because we know that this is something that will be with us for quite a long time, and we put a lot of thought into it. We enlisted the help of a team of professionals, including a company called eSiteful, who right now we're working with to create our new website, and we thought it was very timely for us to work with them so that we could incorporate the design of the new logo into the new website. We've also had some Board members, Darcy Mangoya and Christine Hartley, that helped us with this, as well as our entire Communication Department. So, let me just start with a little bit of the research. So, if you look at this first slide, you can see our current, what we've been currently using as our logo. We have the Cypress Fairbanks ISD seal, and what we have up here are some samples of surrounding districts and what they're using as their logos. Okay? You can see the district seal. It's wonderful. We've been using it for years, but when you look at it in comparison to some of the other districts, it just makes you feel like you might want a little bit more. For the past 75 years, we've used a district seal to represent the rich historic traditions and academic excellence we're famous for. I've had many people ask me what's going to happen to our seal, is our beloved seal going away, and I want to tell you, absolutely not. We'll still use a seal for all of our official documents. People can still use them for their business cards, or, you know, whatever they feel that they want to use that seal on. The seal will be here forever. We're keeping the seal because we value the tradition and 75 years of high standards that it represents. But with that said, we're ready to move on and move forward and brand our district with a recognizable visual that captures the vision of the district. I want to talk about some of the common themes that you'll see here. So, if you look at Houston, Spring, Arlington, they're all utilizing the star. Dallas and Aleaf and Georgetown, they have a silhouette type of design to them. And then, of course, we have lots of apples. And then, if you look down at the bottom, we have lots of symbols, like there's some A pluses and some flames. And, you know, Katie has the fabulous A plus, and everybody loves that, and we actually looked into maybe doing something similar, but we have a C, a D, and an F, and we really didn't want to associate ourselves with that. So, with that said, we decided that might not be the right direction for us to go in. So, we decided to do something just completely different, something that really just makes you think, when you look at it, it will invoke different emotions from different people. It'll mean something different to everybody, but at the same time, just have a positive message about our district. So, without further delay, I'd like to ask our student volunteers to come forward.
Drum roll.
And may I have a drum roll while we get ready to make the big unveiling? Ladies and gentlemen, I proudly present the new CFISD district logo. How do y'all like that?
I think it's great how y'all got a picture of Dr. Henry right there in the middle of it.
Well, that's funny that you should say that, because I really wanted to get your opinion and ask you, President Ryan, what do you see when you look at that? Does that evoke anything from you, or what picture do you see anything special in that, or just what emotion does it evoke from you?
Someone else like to answer that?
We can ask Dr. Henry. Dr. Henry, what do you see when you look at that?
Well, mine was a little different than what most people saw. I saw it as a keyhole, so a key to the future.
Does anybody else see anything they'd like to?
I see it as a graduate.
Well, I think that when you look at it and as you become more familiar with it and it grows on you, you'll see what you want to see in it, and hopefully, it's the vision of the Cyfair graduate, a Cyfair administrator, the work that we do with the community, just our ability to learn, empower, achieve, and dream. So, I hope that everybody sees something positive in this, and we're just very proud to be able to present this to you tonight, and I want to thank everybody for their hard work in this. And while the students go ahead and roll the banner back up, I'd like to ask all of the members up here who've been patiently awaiting to open their gift, now is the time. You get to open your gift. See what you got. Marnie already opened hers. She couldn't wait. While they're opening their gifts, I do want to thank some folks. I want to thank Les Lee, not to be confused with Leslie, and his team from eSiteful. They were instrumental in getting this all put together. I'd like to thank Leslie Francis, our webmaster, the Board members that were involved, our entire Communications Department, all of the student volunteers that came out tonight to help us, and especially Teresa Hall and Dr. Henry. I want to thank you for always finding a way to encourage us and allow us to be creative and let us have fun at the same time, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Nicole. It's a great job by everybody involved. Right now, I'd like to take about a two or three-minute break, and then we'll reconvene, so at this time, let's just take a quick break in the meeting. Agenda Item 4c, the Administration will provide a written report on the end-of-year Academic Performance and Literacy Assessment of Elementary Students in grades K through 2 for the 2012-2013 school year. Are there any questions from Board members on this? No? Okay. The Board will now review and discuss the following action items. Agenda Item 5a, the Board will consider awarding bids and contracts and/or authorizing purchase orders as recommended in the post and agenda item, art and miscellaneous school supplies, bark mulch, central packaging, food service, cleaning supplies, food service, office supplies, paper for food service, produce, food service. Any questions from the Board? Agenda Item 5b, the Board will consider approving the district advanced placement and dual credit government textbook recommendations for spring 2014. Any questions from Board members? Agenda Item 5c, the Board will consider approving the attached list of students for off-campus physical education, Category 1, for the school year's 2013-2014 fall, and will continue through spring 2014. Any questions from Board members? Agenda Item 5d, the Board will consider approving the attached list of students for off-campus physical education, Category 1, for the 2013-2014 school year, spring. Any questions? Agenda Item 5e, the Board will consider approving on second reading additions, revisions, or deletions to district policies. DMC local, professional development, continuing professional education, delete. FEB local attendance, attendance accounting, revise. Any questions? Agenda Item 5f, the Board will consider approving the tax refunds of $500 or greater for Cypress Fairbanks ISD. Questions? Agenda Item 5g, the Board will consider approving the minutes of the November 11, 2013 regular meeting. Questions? Agenda Item 5h, the Board will consider approving the minutes of the November 18, 2013 special called meeting. Any questions? We'll now go to our nonconsent portion of the agenda. Agenda Item 6a, the Board will consider authorizing the superintendent or designate to negotiate and execute the interlocal governmental agreement between Harris County Municipal Utility District Number 29 and Cypress Fairbanks ISD for the providing of funds for the installation of playground equipment at Emmett Elementary School. We have no presentation. Mr. Sprague just went over this. Any questions from Board members on this? Can we move to consent, please? Agenda Item 6b, the Board will consider authorizing the superintendent or designate to negotiate and execute a 0.7011 acre tract for a water line easement to West Harris County Regional Water Authority located at M. Robinson Elementary School. This item may be discussed in closed session pursuant to Section 551.071 and Section 551.072. Any questions from Board members? Can we move this to consent as well? The Board will have a discussion on the following. Agenda Item 7a, the Board will review options for establishing attendance boundaries for Anthony Middle School opening in the 2014-2015 school year. I believe our presenter, is it going to be you, Marty? Or Teresa?
Teresa.
Okay. It's going to be Teresa Hall, Marty Edwards, and Passa Demographics.
President Ryan and Board of Trustees, this agenda item is going to focus on the establishment of boundaries for Anthony Middle School. As you know, Anthony is scheduled to open in August of 2014, and in your packet, we've kind of divided the boundary options that we're going to be sharing with you tonight into two separate items, but the first item is going to focus completely on Anthony Middle School, so if you'll take that first folder there, we'll be working with that, and on the first page, you'll see the timeline that we are recommending for completion of this process. In establishment of attendance boundaries, we no longer have the committee that we convene with parents and community members. We stopped practicing, or stopped that practice several years ago, and I have found that the practice of sharing options and then posting those on the website and providing the opportunity for the entire community to give input and feedback to you as a Board was more productive and more valuable, and I think you were able to get more specific feedback from the communities that are going to be impacted by the change. to be impacted by the change. At this month, we'll share with you two options for Anthony Middle School, two different options for you to look at. And then we will post those on the website starting Monday. They will not be up until Monday. And then, at the same time, our planning department, Ms. Cooper, will be sending information to the campus principals about the posting of the options on the website to Smith Middle School and any other school that may be impacted by the proposed changes. They will include that in their newsletters. They will post it on their campus website. We can, we will also have all of that on the district website. They'll have the link to the options to view. And they'll have the opportunity through the month of December and then again in January, through the month of January, to review those options and provide input to you. And then we will not ask you to take action until February. We'll come back in January, though, at the January board meeting, and we will be making a recommendation to you for the option that we feel may best meet the needs for the campuses impacted by this. And we'll base that recommendation, again, on the feedback that we receive. You'll be provided copies of all of the emails that we receive from community members and parents. We'll provide those in weekly Friday packets. And any questions that you may have throughout the course of this process, you can certainly direct those to us, and we'll be happy to respond. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Edwards. I do want, I'll let Mr. Edwards introduce a representative from Pasa Demographics who's here. Go ahead. Marty?
Thank you. Yeah, in your binders, you have backup information, all the overheads we're going to show tonight. And all the projected numbers we will be using tonight are from our demographer. Of course, you know that's a projection and survey analyst we call Pasa. And Dr. Stacy Tapera is here tonight representing Pasa. So if you have any questions for them as we go through, or I'll answer the majority of the questions, but if you have any questions directly toward Pasa, Stacy will be glad to answer those questions for you. You will receive detailed presentation from Pasa in the spring, updating all the information they presented to you last spring. So the big presentation that they made to the entire board last spring with the big binder that you got with all the information, they're redoing that again this year. And so in the spring, Stacy and her team will come back again and make an updated presentation on all that district information that they put together. What we'd like to talk about first is, of course, the attendance zones for Anthony Middle School. We have two options, as Ms. Hall had stated. And what's on the overhead now is the current attendant zone for Smith Middle School. And if, Blanca, if you'll kind of point out as I talk, the little black dots, so you can kind of relate to the maps, and all the maps are going to be very similar. The black dots represent where schools are located. And then we'll show you some highlights of, so you can get where your bearings are. But if you'll point to Smith Middle School, Blanca, and then also to where Anthony Middle School is being built at this time. So those are the two sites. And then, of course, it's those schools, the boundaries down the south, of course, are the 529 area, just to get your bearings. The Fry Road area runs through the middle of your map. And then Anthony is right there off Tuckerton Road. So it's in that northwest area of our school district. So that's the current attendant zone for Smith Middle School. Option number one, which we'll put on the overhead now, option number one will make Anthony and Smith fairly equal in enrollment. With the proposed opening of the Middle School #20 in the Bridgeland in 2021 or 2022, we will need to rezone students from both Anthony and Smith to the new Middle School if we choose this option, option number one for Anthony. With the possible location of Smith Middle School #20 in the northwest section of the Bridgeland, it will be difficult to rezone students directly from Anthony into 22, thus resulting in a domino effect through Smith. So to get your bearings, again, if you'll kind of point to that, you know, Town Lake is the northern end of that section. Canyon Lakes West is the area. And then Remington Grove, Paddock are the areas to the south. With option number two, opens, it opens a little smaller, Anthony will open a little smaller than Smith. And that's, there's a chart that you will be referring to in a second that will show you those, those numbers for each of the different options. It will be opening a little smaller than Smith, but grows at a steady pace. With this option, we do not foresee any reasons to rezone students out of Anthony in the next decade. When Smith, when the Middle School #20 is projected to open in the Bridgeland, we could split Smith, which would have approximately 2,000 students. This option would also allow the district to rezone students from Aragon into Anthony if needed in the future, although at this time, projections for Aragon do not show a need to rezone any students. This option also keeps all of the current and the future Canyon Lakes West subdivision together. Canyon Lakes is an area that Blanca is pointing to now, and there's also a little area right north of that in the purple here that is also part of Canyon Lakes. And this option would keep all of Canyon Lakes together, one community together, where option number one, they would be split. So we'd like to put up now a chart that shows some attendance calculations that we received from Pasa on option number one and option number two. And I'll kind of go over the chart. And as we go through, this is for Anthony and Smith, but as we go through the next agenda item, we have some other, other schools that we're going to make recommendations on some attendance boundary changes. The chart is going to be the same on all of these schools. And so I'll just go over it one time so you'll understand what we're looking at. On this one, the top of the chart shows the current attendant zone. Of course, we're only talking about splitting Smith. So it carries Smith's attendance all the way out through 2022. Proposed zones, option number one, shows Anthony and Smith, their current capacity, and then their projected enrollment from 2014 through 2022. The next column shows percentage of utilization, and that's based on what we consider our current capacities at those schools. So if you look down on option number one, and it would show you Anthony Middle School in 2014, opening at 71 percent, and Smith at 60 percent. But you can see how they grow very steadily. In 2022, you're looking at 10 years or eight years. Anthony would be 106 percent and Smith 125 percent on that option number one. So the student margin is how many students you are over or under your capacities. So then you drop down to proposed zones, option number two, and it shows you the same information. Anthony and Smith, what their, what the attendance numbers would be from 2014 to 2022, percentage of utilization, and student margin. So I know it's a lot to digest in a short time, but those are the numbers that Pasa's projecting for both Smith and Anthony on options number one and option number two. Yeah, so the numbers that we're showing you, again, are all resident numbers. They do not include any transfers or special programs. So any number that we're going to show you tonight, with the exception of one chart that we have, is going to show you what is currently zoned into those attendant zones. So if you have students who are coming from outside of the district, or they have, their parents are staffed in Cyfair and they come from outside of the district, or their transfer is in from other zones within the district, those numbers would not be included in any of those numbers that are shown on the proposals. And basically, the subdivisions that we're discussing, when you look at option number one, and I think you have this in your packet, the number that's to the left is what we call a res code number. That's how we plug those into a computer, and it tells us how many students are in those different areas. So those aren't really important to you right now. But the subdivisions that would be rezoned in option number one to Anthony are Canyon Lakes West, east of Fry Road, Canyon Lakes West, west of Fry Road, Lakeview Lost, Lone Oak, Paddock, Remington Grove, Town Lake, Villages of Canyon Lakes West, Westgate, Westgate west of the creek, Windhaven Lakes, and Yopon Ranch. And remaining in Smith would be Black Horse Ranch, Bridgeland, Camden, Cypress Creek Apartments, Cypress Creek Lakes, Cypress Creek Ranch, and Stone Ridge. On option number two, those same subdivisions are listed. The main difference is Canyon Lakes West. In option number two, at Anthony would be Lakeview Lost, Lone Oak, Paddock, Remington Grove, Town Lake, Westgate, Westgate west of creek, Windhaven Lakes, and Yopon Ranch. And then at Smith, Black Horse Ranch, Bridgeland, Camden, Cypress Creek Apartments, Canyon Lakes West, east of Fry Road, Canyon Lakes West, west of Fry Road, Canyon Lakes West, north of West Road, Cypress Creek Lakes, Cypress Creek Ranch, Stone Ridge, and Villages of Canyon Lakes West. And to give you a little better idea of what the map actually looks like, we have an aerial. Can't really see it too well on the overhead, but you can see it pretty clear on your paper. But Blanca, if you'll kind of point out as we talk, you know, the areas that we're looking at rezoning either on option one or option two would be that Town Lake area, which is, starts way up in the north on the 290 area and goes all the way down to Tuckerton. So that's the Town Lake area, the Windhaven Lakes area just south of it, Lone Oak, Westgate, Paddock, Remington Grove, Yopon Ranch, that whole area. And then the area that's west of that is your Canyon Lakes area. Canyon Lakes West, Canyon Lakes west of Fry. And then that undeveloped area, there's also Canyon Lakes that's right north of that, Canyon Lakes West, north of West Road. So that kind of gives you an idea of area of how it actually looks on a map. With that, I'd ask if there's, if you have any questions?
Any questions from board members? Why don't we go ahead? Bob, you lead us off?
Just, thanks for the report, but I just have a question because it looks like, and once again, that Greenhouse Road comes up, and there obviously, it looks like they're thinking that West Road is going to go through to Fry before Greenhouse goes through the doggy town? No?
You can, I don't think Greenhouse is going to go through anytime soon either.
Okay. Greenhouse is going to connect ultimately with Anthony Middle School because that is its address. It will go further. But there is a bridge that has not been built by Landtejas, which is right here, that's not going to connect Greenhouse all the way through. West Road, at this time, has been put on the back burner. We contacted Precinct 3 on their road projects, and they stated that they're still waiting for the developer to do the initial pavement.
Okay. So basically, the kids that are in Cypress Lakes West, if they go to Anthony, they're going to have to go around to be able to get to Anthony, right?
They, yes, they would. Because Greenhouse does not connect all the way up to Anthony, they would have to exit Log and Bow, go up Barker Cypress, and down Tuckerton up to Anthony.
And Roy might be able to speak a little bit if you have updated information on West Road or Greenhouse.
As part of our sales agreement, when we had the land donation from Landtejas, they are required to construct at least two lanes of West Road from where our site is all the way to Fry Road. They're still working on the drawings and getting permit approval with Harris County, and they had a couple of easement issues to work out. In fact, one of the easements, we just recently got approved by you guys last month. And soon as they get that permit approval, they are planning on moving forward with construction. I do not have an official timeline yet at this point, but they are going to move forward with two lanes of West Road.
The other thing I wanted to point out was feeder patterns. As far as feeder patterns are concerned, Smith is currently split between Cy Ranch and Cy Springs. In both of these options, Smith and Anthony will continue to be split between Ranch and Springs.
Bob, do you have any more right now?
No.
Tom?
When I take a look at option two that lists the different subdivisions, you'll note for Smith, we have identified 0152 Canyon Lakes West, north of West Road. But when we turn over to option one, that area doesn't show up.
In option number two?
Yes. When you take a look at option two, zone to Smith, 0152 Canyon Lakes West, north of West Road.
So that option in option number two would, would be in Smith's attendant zone?
In option one, this area has not been developed, and so that area would be zoned to Smith.
So that's the reason why we left it off the chart, because it isn't developed yet?
Yes.
But there's nothing there right currently?
Any other questions from board members? Marty, I just had a couple of questions on, what's the, what's the projection, if you have any, of all the area north of, actually, Anthony Middle School in that, yes, yes, that area there? What's that projection for homes, or is it going to be all residential?
A lot of this area is going to be commercial, but there are homes that are opening, and I can get you those numbers and email them.
And that might be something Stacy is aware of, that she could answer maybe better than we could.
I would have to look up the answer, and I can certainly do that. I know it's part of Town Lake. And again, our data that we have is based on our interviews conducted last January and February. And so I'm sure their plans could have changed in the meantime. And so we are currently undertaking those updated interviews. So we'll have better information for you in the spring for that. But in a few minutes, I can, I can look up what information we had a year ago. But I do know that it's mixed residential and commercial as a part of the Town Lake Master Plan community.
Okay. Thank you very much. And it doesn't have to be tonight. I'm just curious because I want us to, to make sure that we look at future development in these areas so we don't have to come back and move someone to, from, who's currently at Smith to Anthony and vice versa. That's the last thing that we want to do during this entire process.
Yeah. And that's one of the reasons, you know, that option that leaves Anthony a little smaller allows Anthony to grow very quickly, and it also keeps all of Town Lake together.
And then what, along those same lines on, if you go north on Canyon Lakes West, there's, it looks like a bunch of undeveloped land. You have the development and then the undeveloped.
Right.
Is that?
That's, actually, the area that Roy was, was talking about. That's where the Landtejas area is. There's nothing currently there, but that land is projected to be developed by Landtejas.
And will we have possible numbers for that?
Yes. And those are included in these numbers that you see.
Yeah.
Okay. So the undeveloped land's included in the numbers that we're getting here?
Yes.
In the projections, as it projects out further out, those students were included in those, in that growth area.
Awesome. Okay. And then if you go down further south, and you've got Yopon Ranch and Remington Grove?
Remington Grove.
What's, what's to the west of that?
This area right here is Cypress Springs subdivision. All this is Yopon Ranch, this whole section right here. This is Remington Grove. They currently go to Andre and Hopper and Cy Springs. This is Paddock. And this right here is Westgate, west of the creek. And they also attend Cy Springs and Hopper.
Okay. And then one, one last one. You said, right now, Smith feeds Springs and Ranch, correct? And Anthony, on both of those options, will, what, what students, what part of the map will feed what school for the high schools?
Right. If you want to show them there, Blanca.
West Road is the dividing line. So everything south of West Road is, is going to be attending Cypress Springs. Everything north will be attending Cypress Ranch.
And currently, currently, is that how it is currently?
That's how it is currently, yes. That's no change for the high school.
Okay. Okay.
There are no recommendations.
And on either option, are we, we're using all-natural boundaries? Are we dividing any neighborhoods or?
No. And that's, we're not dividing neighborhoods, and we're keeping neighborhoods completely together on.
together on both of these options.
Good.
And that's, that's one, the second option I mentioned, Canyon Lakes West, there's part of Canyon Lakes West that's developed already, and there's part of Canyon Lakes West that is not developed. And with option number one, it would, option number one keeps Canyon Lakes West, we'll put it back there on the map, these sections are Canyon Lakes West that are developed, and they're currently showing them, and this option would go to the, they would go to the Anthony zone. This section that's north of it is Canyon Lakes West also, but it's an undeveloped piece of property. So in this option, that, that portion of Canyon Lakes West would stay at Smith.
Okay, and that was option one?
That was option number one.
Okay. And Bob, you had, said you had another question? Thank you.
I have a question. Been trying to, it took me a while to get my bearings on the map, but I know in that area right there off of Fry, I mean, of Barker Cypress, right north of Tuckerton, where it angles up to 290, there's a little pie-shaped triangle right there, and I know we've looked at that a couple of times, and I believe, don't they go, don't they have to go across 290 to, are they going to Spillane?
They, they do attend Spillane. This is Riada Ranch West, and this is Hot Wells, and this is Barker Lake, and they attend Spillane as well as Riada Ranch.
I guess I kind of have a little bit of concern that maybe we ought to look at making Barker Cypress a?
Division, am I off or on?
You are now.
What did I do? I got, good, disregard anything I just said, no. So I mean, I'm just looking at that Barker Cypress, Barker Cypress Road and thinking maybe that ought to be considered as a dividing line?
Mm-hmm.
Because I know that little triangle has been a problem in the past that we've talked about.
I think, I think one of the issues you might want to look at when you do that is the high school feeder pattern on that also, because I believe those kids that you're talking about currently attend Si Woods. So those would be the only kids, if, if, I think if your suggestion is if you move those kids over to Anthony, those would be the, one small pocket of Anthony kids who would then go on to Si Woods, where the rest of the kids of the northern part would go to Si Ranch, and the southern part would go to Si Springs. So you'd be splitting, your, Anthony would be split by three different high schools.
This is Barker Cypress right here, this is Hot Wells, Riada Ranch, Riada Ranch West, and Barker Lake, and they do attend Spillane and Si Woods at the present time.
Okay.
But we can certainly look into it.
Mr. Covey, in looking at the boundary options, really all of the ones that we're going to present to you this evening, we really tried to be careful in looking at making any recommendations that may possibly change feeder patterns, because we will be opening High School 11 in 2016. I get my numbers messed up. And so we really wanted to be careful, knowing that we're uncertain about what those attendance boundaries would look like, and so not shifting kids that maybe we would end up having to shift and change again when we start, you know, when you start changing high school attendance boundaries, it really has a huge domino effect, because then you, middle schools and elementary feeder patterns. So we can certainly, maybe in the, when we start looking at that, if we want to make some changes then, I mean, we can do it now, but it would change their high school feeder pattern.
Growth is about 50 a year.
Okay.
Right, and that's what I just looked at from what we had.
Blanca was just sharing on Town Lake, their growth for middle school students is about 50 students a year just out of that Town Lake community.
Additional students, yeah.
Any other questions on this particular presentation?
And what, Blanca, just for clarification, those students attend, what elementary do they attend?
Which one, I'm sorry?
The, in the area that Mr. Covey's inquiring about?
Right here, they attend, hold on, let me check real quick.
Because that's another factor, they may be the only students that would attend a different elementary feeder pattern as well.
Right.
So it really.
Berks.
I would think, I think it's Berks.
You're right, it's Berks, Berks Elementary.
And if you look at the elementary feeders, we don't have any Berks students currently.
They're far up, I'm not sure about that.
I'm not sure, let me check.
Zoned.
We're going to check that.
Berks Elementary.
Berks and Lampkin. Here it is.
Makes sense.
Yeah. Here it is, Blanca. Actually, actually, part of, part of that area, the southern part of that area that you're talking about, the little triangle, the southern part attends Berks, and then the northern part of that attends Lampkin.
Next proposed.
But that entire area does go to Spillane, and then they do go to Woods?
Si Woods.
Si Woods.
Okay. I'm, I'm kind of of the mindset that I'd, and I'm just sharing this with the other board members, I, I would prefer not to rezone an area that, that we don't have to rezone just because of numbers at this time, because I know how critical that middle school to high school move is for the students, and, you know, a lot of them, that's when they're finding their identity, they're getting involved in clubs and bands and athletics, and being able to, to stay with their classmates is, is a big deal.
Yeah, and that was one of the things that Dr. Tepere was just sharing with me, that when we, when we looked at these, and they had a lot to do with this, and we communicated with them quite a bit on these proposals, that the designs were made so we would not have to move kids again, that these were more of a permanent change, and, because we don't want to move kids now, and then we open up another school, and we're moving that same group of kids. So, so the proposals were made really to be permanent or long-term changes.
Did, Passa, Stacy, did y'all, when you did a, a lot of these projections that y'all do for, do you do a, like a normal projection, and then you do a, oh, holy cow, this is blowing up, projection?
We do.
Okay, okay. I'm just, because if you look at Bridgeland in the last year, I mean, once Dr. Henry moved in there, hey, they wanted to be neighbors. But it seems every time I drive through there, though, that there's, there's a lot of development going on in those areas, and so.
Absolutely. These projections that you see are based on our most likely scenario of growth. We do provide a low-growth and a high-growth scenario, and so we, we can refer to those to, as we, as we move along, to see, well, are you trending a little bit higher than the most likely growth and, and more toward the, the high-growth scenario? But both of these options that you've seen tonight, the, if the actual enrollment trends more closely to the high-growth scenario faster than we anticipated, that's likely to happen in the majority in the proposed Smith area, the Smith zone. That is the Bridgeland area with the, sort of, the hotbed of, of new home construction. And so the only change that that would make would be to move up the need for that Bridgeland middle school by a year or so. However, I think it's important to emphasize what Marty just mentioned, and that is that both of these options were designed in order to try, it, it's tempting to overfill a new school, because, because everybody wants to go there, and also because it's, it's a, it's a new school, and, and it seems like the best use of funds, why would you want to have, you know, a 40% utilized school? Of course, you wouldn't. But we, we have to balance that early-year utilization with the growth potential five years down the road, because we don't want to, again, we don't want to have to move students out of Anthony, again, that we just moved in, particularly if we move them from Smith to Anthony, and then have to move them right back to Smith.
Absolutely, absolutely. Okay, thank you. Any additional questions from board members?
One extra comment, we actually, Blanca pulled out the, the sheet, actually.
This is the, excuse me, elementary map. This section right here, which is Riada Ranch West and Barker Lake, attend Posma. This section of Riada Ranch and Canyon Lakes, south of Tuckerton, attend Rennell, and this section, which is Hot, Hot Wells, attends Lampkin. But this whole section goes to Cypress Woods.
Okay, thank you.
Just to clarify.
Agenda item 7B, the board will review rezoning modifications of multiple campus attendance boundaries for the 2014-2015 school year, and I guess we can just carry on, Marty?
We'll just carry on, Ms. Hall, if you want.
Tracy, you want to?
Well, I just want to kind of set the stage for the attendance boundaries that Marty's going to share with you, the recommendations he's going to share with you. As you see, as we go through this packet, there are going to be several attendance boundary recommendations that we are making. The, the boundary options that we are sharing here, and they're really not options, they're recommendations, because you're going to only see one shared, they're for multiple reasons. In some cases, we are working to clean up some feeder pattern situations that we, like we just discussed, that maybe we have a small group of elementary students that are following a different middle school and high school feeder pattern, and just over the course of the years, we get a lot of requests for those students to possibly be approved for transfers to different schools, or, you know, can you rezone us? The other thing that we're looking at, obviously, is to try to reduce enrollment at several of our elementary schools. But we were very thoughtful and very careful, and Marty and Blanca worked very closely with Stacy as we started to develop these options, because of just what Stacy said, of wanting to be very cautious of not just moving kids that down the road we may have to move again. We all know that Elementary 54 is scheduled to open in 2015, and then for Elementary 55, we are still working to secure a site for that, that particular elementary campus. And Mr. Sprague is really trying to find land in the southern portion of the district around that 529 area. That is, as you start to look at all of the current enrollment of many of our elementary schools, it's a very densely populated area, and we do have several of those elementary schools that are very crowded at this time. We made decisions, in some cases, not to move any students at this time because of, until we're confident of where that next school will be in that part of the district, we didn't want to move kids more than necessary. So you may have questions about, for instance, Andre. Why are you not moving students out of Andre? They have, you know, close to 1,300 students at this time. But that is because we're waiting to finalize where 55 would be located, and then when we draw those attendance boundaries, make changes that would hopefully provide relief to Andre. So with that being said, really, the attendance zone recommendations that we're making, we see as permanent, long-term recommendations, and really trying to accomplish two things or take two things into consideration, keep neighborhoods together, keep communities together. I think that's always been a priority for our board and for our community, to really make every effort when drawing attendance boundaries not to split up communities. And sometimes that is very, very difficult, and sometimes we leave a campus with more students than you think maybe we should, but if, if we tried to split it up, it would require splitting up a particular community, and we'll give you a couple examples of that tonight. And then the other thing is to really be sensitive to those feeder patterns, and not have small groups of students break off from an elementary school, that they've gone to school with those students from K through 5, and then they follow a different middle school and high school feeder pattern. So those are the things that we really took into consideration with some of these recommendations. Just so you know, before we finalized the, what we wanted to share with you tonight, we did schedule a meeting with all of the principals that would possibly have students impacted by these changes if they were approved by you, and we solicited their input and feedback, and, you know, obviously, they know their communities better than anyone, and talked to them about our thoughts and feelings about why we were considering that. And so that was very valuable. We did make some tweaks and changes based on feedback that we received from them, but we really did spend a lot of time looking at this. So I'm going to turn it over to Marty, and again, I know it's a lot here, but there, I think there are some positive changes, hopefully, and again, we'll go through the same process as we shared with you with Anthony attendance boundaries of providing the opportunity for those community members to give input to you and not ask you to take action until February. Okay?
All right, the, the first one in your packet, what we'd like to talk about is Keith and Swinkie. Looking at your utilization chart, and again, the charts are all going to be the same as we have, yes?
Marty, can I just interrupt you for a second, just to find out what would be easier for y'all? Do you want to, because I know there's several here that you're going to do?
Right.
Would you rather go through all of them and then field questions, or field questions after you complete each one?
Well, that was, I was going to get to that. That was, what I think is the easiest for, for y'all to do would be at the end of each one, because there's going to be several. Or we can do it either way, however, however you would like to do.
No, we'll do, let's, let's do it at the end of each one, we'll stop and get feedback from the board.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. So looking at your, your first chart that you have, Blanca has that on the overhead, looking at the 2014 utilization chart, if you drop down in the percentage utilization with the current attendance zones, it shows you that in 2014, Swinkie is at 117% of utilization, and Keith is at 75%. So there is a need to relieve Swinkie, especially when you look long range. If you continue to look out through the years, you look over to 2018, and it shows that Keith is at 80% utilization, and Swinkie is at 138%. And if you even go out to 2022, it shows you Keith at 87%, and again, Swinkie at 158%. So the growth is in the Swinkie area, so we feel that we need to relieve them, and, and Keith is really being underutilized, and so we're able to move some students from the Swinkie attendance zone into that Keith attendant zone to address that. Swinkie currently has three portable buildings, which they will, which need to remain on their campus for future growth, and the feeder patterns would remain the same with, with the proposal we're going to make to you. Swinkie is 100% Salyers, and Keith is split between Salyers and Goodson. The areas that we are proposed to rezone from Swinkie to Keith are all closer in distance, driving distance to Keith than they are Swinkie. When Swinkie first opened, it had a very small population, and we needed to put kids into that attendance zone. Now we're having just the opposite effect. Swinkie is growing very rapidly, and so we need to take some kids out of that Swinkie zone and move them into Keith, where we do have some, some area to move those kids into. So if you'll look at the maps, and again, these, these maps are all going to be similar as we move through each of these presentations. This is the current elementary attendance zone for Swinkie. Swinkie is all in the blue color, and Keith is in the light brown color. And again, Swinkie is the, is the black square on Sheil Road, and you can see where Keith is located in Fairfield. So those are, that's the current attendance zone, and then if you look at the little yellow boxes that are outlined in the blue area on the previous map, and in the brown, and it's okay, you can just keep it up there, Blanca. And then the, the brown area on the next map, those are the areas that we are proposing move from Swinkie to Keith.
This is that bridal path.
So I'll give you a minute, just to, just kind of look at that, that map and kind of get your bearings. Again, you can see where Swinkie is located, you can see Sheil Road, Cypress Wood Drive is to the south, 290 is down to the far south, you can see where Sheil Road comes in, actually, Sheil makes a couple of turns in there.
Muskie.
And Muskie Road is where Blanca.
There is Mason Road. Show me where Mason is.
This is Mason Road.
Okay.
Okay? Just to kind of get your bearings of, of the area that we're talking about. If you look at those areas, the areas that we're, we're talking about are Bridal Oaks Estates. Blanca, if you want to put that overhead on, it might help with this part. Go ahead and put the overhead on. You just got the, this map.
That area.
Yeah, the area. This, this is an area, an aerial of the area that we're talking about. In those areas, and Blanca, if you'll kind of point to those as we, as we talk about, I mean, again, if you'll point out where Swinkie is and where Keith is on the map.
Swinkie.
Swinkie and Keith. The areas that we're looking at moving to relieve the, the overpopulation at Swinkie into Keith would be Bridal Oaks Estates, Cypress Landing, Edworthy Farms, Riverton Ranch, and the Saddle Ridge Estates area. So those areas, as you can see, are all on the eastern side of both of those schools. And if you look at the two that are actually the closest, which are Bridal Oaks Estates and the Saddle Ridge Estates, for transportation-wise, those, those students have to come all the way down to Sheil Road to get out of those communities, and then they come down Sheil Road, and they actually, if they take a left, they turn right to Keith. If they keep going further and turn right, they would turn up to Swinkie. So they're actually closer, transportation-wise, to Keith than they are to Swinkie. Of course, the ones that are further out are also closer. If you look at the, the projections, we're using these projections, and again, these are resident students, these do not include transfers or any special programs, Keith in 2014- Keith in 2014, with their proposed zones, would be 992 students, and Swinkie would be 1,108 students. The utilization would be 91% for Keith and 101% for Swinkie. And you can see how that plays out as you go through 2022. And again, all these numbers are numbers that Passa has provided for us. If that'd ask if there's any questions on this particular proposal.
Any questions from board members? And Marty, I just have one quick question.
Yeah.
On the, on the, the boundary issues where you show the feeder schools, so with this change, Keith will go?
Keith is still, Keith is currently split between Swinkie and Goodson?
Wait, wait, wait.
I'm, I mean, I'm sorry.
No, no, hang on, just let me finish. You've, Salyards.
Salyards and Goodson.
All right, so with this, it says Goodson Ranch, and then it looks like Goodson Woods. Will no students from Keith go to Salyards? Or did y'all just leave Salyards off? See what I'm saying? I'm, I'm looking at feeder schools.
Yeah, there are students at Keith and Salyards.
So what, what are the actual feeder schools then?
Keith, Keith is a feeder school between Salyards and Goodson.
And it will remain that way?
It will remain that way.
Okay, so we need to correct that.
Right.
Board members on our.
I think it's on that little blue chart, the, the one that's listed in blue.
I don't know, it's this one?
Yeah, that has a little, yeah, that one with the little blue mark on it.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. You can move forward. Teresa, you're going to, when would you be looking for the, for the, because we need to make sure we say some things publicly so people don't get alarmed on issues that we're looking at? Are you looking at the board to vote on this, you said, by February or in February, or?
Correct. Well, tonight, we're just presenting the options publicly, or the recommended changes in this case. We'll come back in January and kind of review and kind of summarize the feedback and input that we've received on each one. And then if there are any modifications or changes that the board would like for us to consider, we can talk about that in January. And then in February, we would ask for you to take action on any of those.
Okay, I just want to get that out there, because I know when you start dealing with schools and where people are zoned.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you, go ahead, Marty.
Okay. If you'll turn the packet, the next section we're going to address is the areas that are out on the far west and south end of the district, the elementary schools. We feel we need to relieve McPhee, Tips, and Wilson at this time. They have utilization percentages of 114%, 124%, and 135%. So those schools are all very large for their, for their size, for their capacities. And looking at the, at the, the ways to relieve those schools, and they're listed on your chart, the schools that could relieve those campuses are Emory, Hemingway, Metcalf, and Sheridan. If you'll turn to the next map. We have some proposals that, that this shows the current attendance zones. And again, the little yellow boxes are the areas that would be moved, proposed to be moved to relieve the overcrowding in the schools I mentioned earlier. So if you look at the, the next sheet, the proposed elementary zoning maps, you can see that we would be moving an area from Tips to Metcalf, from Wilson to Sheridan, from McPhee to Emory, and then from Emory to Hemingway. The next, the next chart, and I'll give you a minute to look at that if you need some time. The next chart's going to show you, with those suggested moves, what, what it's going to do to the projected enrollment and utilization. If you look at the proposed rezoning scenarios, Emory would have a utilization of 87%, Hemingway 102%, McPhee 97, Metcalf 110, Sheridan 102, Tips 121, and Wilson 109. So those would be significantly lower than what they currently are. Tips is still one of those schools, is kind of an anomaly, and we're hoping that, like Ms. Hall had said, we can find some property south of 529 to permanently help Tips in their enrollment. But we really don't want to move students and then again have to move them again when we find that site, and move students multiple times in, over a period of a few years. So we feel that the, the relief that we can give Tips and these other schools, again, are going to be permanent reliefs.
And Marty, would you explain for the board, just with Tips, the challenge? Because I know that's one of our most overcrowded elementary schools. But the problem is, in order to, we can certainly move more students possibly out of there. Obviously, we would run the chance of moving them again. But with the way that attendance boundary is drawn in those communities, it would force us to break up a whole community.
Right.
Blanca, correct me if I'm wrong, Timber Creek Apartments is an example, is zoned to Tips. Over 500 students are in that community, in Timber Creek. So it's, we don't have a place to, that can take 500 students at this time, or we would have to split up Timber Creek Apartments. And it was the recommendation, even a couple of years ago, with Pam Redd, who was the prior principal at Tips, about really trying to avoid that, if at all possible, because of the extended families that live in that complex and the relationships that they have. She just did not recommend at all that we consider trying to split up that complex. But that's just an example of why, with Tips, it's a challenge right now, because we don't have a school, if we want to keep, maintain the priority of keeping a community together, we don't have a school that can take the number of students that are in those communities zoned to that school, other than the small portion that we are recommending go to Metcalf. And if, is it just like they can walk out their back gate and walk, actually walk to school?
There's actually a, a gate that they can walk directly to, to the school.
This is Villages of Langham Creek Estates. This is Westminster, and there is a walkway that goes right back here to, to Metcalf. And there's a gate right here, and at this gate, that's where the, the students from this whole area and this area walk to Metcalf. So it does connect through Westminster Landing.
All right. So I'd like to talk about those particular areas that we're suggesting moving to the different, different campuses. We propose moving Plantation Lakes Northwest from McPhee to Emory. You can see on the map that there's easy access to Emory through the Plantation Lake subdivision. Blanca's pointing that out right now. If you'll kind of show them where Emory is and where McPhee is. The second proposal would be to rezone Bear Creek Meadows West from Emory to Hemingway. Bear Creek Meadows West would be united with Bear Creek Meadows Northwest. Both would attend Hemingway. All right? If you'll put the map up on Tips. Tips' projected enrollment for 2014, 15 is, is 1412 with 129 capacity, so they're very large. A small amount of relief could be given by moving Villages of Langham Creek Estates, which is the area that, that Blanca is showing you there, from Tips to Metcalf. And again, that's an area that has very easy access into Metcalf. The subdivision is much closer to Metcalf than Tips. And also, Metcalf would continue to be a feeder to Kayla Middle School. Those students currently attend Kayla, and McPhee would continue to attend Kayla Middle School. The other areas of Tips, as Ms. Hall had stated, are, have too many students to move together, if we're going to keep a community together. It would overcrowd Metcalf. A future elementary site south of 529 could provide additional tips for, relief for Tips if we can find that site. The next map that we want to show you is the proposed relief for Wilson. We propose moving the section of Grand Oaks that's shown on the map from Wilson to Sheridan. There's easy transportation access to Sheridan out of Grand Oaks via Queenston and Keith Harrow, and it's slightly closer. We took it from the middle of the subdivision. It was a little round, it was around a mile, actually, closer to Sheridan than it is to Wilson. So those students could be moved from, from Grand Oaks and Wilson into Sheridan. If there are any questions on this particular part?
Questions from board members? Marty, on that last, on that last part, did you have?
Wilson?
Grand Oaks?
Grand Oaks.
If you could put Grand Oaks back up? Where's Grand Oaks going now?
Wilson.
The, the section that's in the large red triangle, that section goes to Wilson. And that's the section we're proposing coming out of Wilson to Sheridan.
And then where does the, where does the other Grand Oaks that's south of there that just looks like a horseshoe, where do they go?
Wilson.
The, the area that's where, right, right in here? Or further over? Here?
Kind of up, go up, stop, right there.
Right here? Those go to Wilson also. There, there's a large easement that if you look at that red line and look at the map, there's an, this whole, Blanca, if you'll kind of outline the whole area. Grand Oaks is an, an area that the, the northern part of it's currently under development. But then it's a large area, and the eastern part of that subdivision has not been developed. So if you look right to the south where it says Grand Oaks is 0332, that's a large area that will eventually be part of Grand Oaks, but that is an undeveloped area with nothing there at this time. So Grand Oaks is going to be a much, actually much larger subdivision than it currently is. So it's, it's, it's not just those one little areas you're, you're seeing that are currently developed, it's going to be a much bigger area.
Right, more development.
Right.
And that, that section you said currently goes to Wilson?
That section currently goes to Wilson. Both of those sections of Grand Oaks go to Wilson.
Okay.
And that, there's, and when you look at the red line that makes the, the angle down to the left, if you look at right here, there's an easement that runs along here, there's a natural easement that actually separates this section of Grand Oaks from this section.
Okay.
You can look at the houses and see how the rows are drawn, they're, they're backed up to that easement.
Right. Okay, I just want to make sure I understood that option.
Right. Anybody else?
Keep it moving.
Moving along. Continuing in your packet, looking at your current attendance zone chart that's provided for you, that has Frazier, Gleason, and Reed listed, you can see that we, we need to provide some relief for Frazier. In 2014, Frazier is projected to have 130% utilization, while Gleason will have 71% utilization. So Gleason is, is really underutilized, and Frazier is busting at the seams. So to, to do that, we can move some students directly from Frazier into Reed, but the other portion to make that happen would be, I guess the domino effect, you would call it, would have to move some students from Frazier into Reed, and then Reed into Gleason. But there's a, a middle school scenario that's going to follow along with that, that's, that is actually beneficial if, to do that. And we'll show that next, after, after this part. So again, looking at the utilization, you can see on your chart, the current attendant zones, what the utilization is, and you can see how that continues to track out. Relief for Frazier will include moving students from Reed from, Reed from Frazier and Reed and Gleason, or Reed to Gleason. We propose moving Woodwin Lakes North from Frazier to Reed. And again, if you turn to the map, this is, shows the current attendant zone. That whole purple area is Frazier. The brown area to the south is Reed, and the green area is Gleason. And then the black dots that are on the maps, those are the actual school locations. And if you can kind of get your bearings, you can see where Beltway 8 is the, kind of makes, winds through, through the middle of Gleason. You can see Breen Road is listed, Woodwin Oaks Drive is listed, Winfern comes up and divides the schools, and to the north is Fallbrook. So these are, these are the current zones. The next map would show you what the attendant zones would look like with the proposals that we're, that we're making. Again, Frazier would be in the purple area, Reed would be in the, again, in the brown, and then Gleason in the green. All right? And so, if you'll put up the, the aerial. This is what the area looks like on an aerial. What we would propose moving is Woodwin Lakes North from Frazier to Reed's attended zone. This would, this would unite the entire Woodwin Oaks subdivision. Currently, Woodwin Oaks is a large subdivision that's split in half. The southern part of that subdivision attends Reed currently, and the northern half of the subdivision currently attends Frazier. So that subdivision, if you look to the far right on your map that you have, this map.
It'll automatically focus.
This is the sub, this is the part where we're talking about possibly moving into Reed. This is all one subdivision, Woodwin, Woodwin Oaks. The northern part of this subdivision currently attends Frazier, and the southern part of the subdivision currently attends Reed. And so our proposal would be to reunite this subdivision and have them go into one elementary school, which would be Reed. We'd also recommend moving the Tob Road area from Frazier to Gleason. And Blanca pointed that out, the Tob Road area. And then also, we'd recommend moving the section of Woodwin Lakes that currently attends Reed to Gleason, along with Creekside and North Pines Mobile Home Park. And Blanca, if you'll point to where that is again?
Right here, it's this whole section.
This would unite the entire Woodwin Lakes subdivision at one elementary school. And Woodwin Lakes is, is broken into different sections, split by Winfern. And so by, with this proposal, it would reunite, or would unite that entire subdivision into one elementary school, just as we did with, reuniting the other school that was split between Frazier and Reed.
And Blanca, are there, there are a number of Woodwin Lakes students that currently are on a transfer to Gleason as well? And we've had requests from that community, just so the board knows, we've had requests from the Woodwin Lakes residents to put their whole community together at one elementary, which we are recommending as Gleason, since it does have capacity.
And Gleason has approximately 117 transfers. Out of those 117, 29 are from the Reed attended zone, but there are 17 in this little area. So some of those students are already attending Gleason. And we have a total of 100, approximately, little over 100, that would be rezoned to Gleason. And Gleason is decreasing.
When, and I want to ask my cohorts on the board if they, if they want this. Do we have, typically in the past, when we rezone neighborhoods, y'all would give us the number of students currently in those neighborhoods?
And we, we could get those to you.
Well, I want to make sure, I don't want to be the only one making a request that the others don't.
That's good information.
Don't care about it, but, you know, I want to make sure, like, on some, several years ago, we rezoned a mobile home park that, they actually had three students, and they didn't want to move. And so, thank goodness, a gentleman came and spoke at our board meeting, or we'd have moved them. So I'd like to know how many, the numbers of, of the neighborhoods, how many students they have.
Can I have them now, if you wish? I can just write them up here. I can just write them up here real quick.
No, why don't you go ahead and just?
She can do it quickly, go ahead.
Well, I know, but I'm, we've got a whole lot of.
Okay.
Stuff. I think if you just maybe add that on paper, that would be what would help.
Okay, absolutely.
Is it, does it, would anybody else like that, by the way?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Good idea, Dawn.
All right, moving along. This one's going to have a tie-in to the one we just discussed. And this, this next one in your packet is going to show Cook and Dean. The same area that we talked about moving out of Reed into Gleason. We would propose to move out of Dean into Cook. And again, it's that feeder pattern. We want to ensure that those students stay in that, in a, in a strong feeder pattern. Looking at the chart of Cook and Dean, you can see that Dean is in need of relief. Next year, Dean's projected enrollment of resident students is 1,653, which is 106%. And if you look at Cook, Cook's 1,542, and they're at 100%. You can see how Dean continues to grow. Cook is, Cook is fairly stable. And we have some other issues with Dean as far as the campus, the way it's set up. There's very little, we currently have nine portable buildings on Dean's campus. And we cannot add any more additional portable buildings because of the structure and this, we can't get permits to build any more buildings at Dean. And so if Dean were continued to grow with its current, with its current enrollment and current zone, you can see how large it's going to get if we do nothing. Out in 2022, Dean's looking at 1,786 students. And so we're going to have to provide Dean some relief. And we feel this, even though it's a small relief, we feel it's, it's going to be a permanent relief again. And we can provide some immediate relief to Dean. With the proposed zone, if you look down, it was showed Cook at 1,596 students and Dean at 1,599 students. And they would be at 104 and 103% each. And then again, you can track that on out and see how that tracks out through 2022. The students that we are talking about rezoning would be those same group of students who currently attend Reed and then go on to Dean presently. They would be rezoned to Gleason and then go on to Cook. And so again, Cook is a pure feeder school into Jersey Village. So those students would be into Gleason, into Cook, and then into Jersey Village. And they currently also go to Jersey Village. Cook currently has no portable buildings on their campus. So we do have available space if we do have to have portables. If Cook, for some unseen reason, grows more than we expect. We do have room where we can add portables to Cook's campus where we cannot add portables to Dean. Are there any other questions on, on that particular move?
Any questions on this group?
And with Dean also, you know, I know we're looking at their future growth. And it is another example of a school that right now, in a couple of years, we may want to consider moving another group of students in order to provide some relief to Dean. But in doing so, it would change feeder patterns to their high schools. And so, and not wanting to change high schools at this time, we did not recommend that.
If you look at the map that Blanca has put up, again, that's going to be that same area you saw when you were looking at the map of Reed and Gleason and Frazier. That, that same area, and Blanca put 54 in there, that's the number of middle school students that we're talking about moving currently. That would be in Dean moving into the Cook attendant zone.
Bob has a question.
Okay.
Just, Marty?
Yeah.
That, that little section that's right above where you're planning to move, that section right there. I know there's bound to be a reason why.
That's Rolling Fork subdivision, which is a fairly large subdivision. It's also right in the middle. It, Reed Elementary sits right in the middle of that subdivision. If you'll show them where that is, if you have a map you can pull out.
Reed is right here.
So if, and again, we're talking about feeder patterns. Reed goes to Dean. And the area that we're talking about goes to Cook. So if we pull those students, again, you're going to be pulling, you would have to move also those students. They would be going, they would be the only Reed students who would then be going into Cook. So it's, it's a feeder pattern.
Okay.
Is the issue. But Reed sits, Reed sits in that subdivision.
It's right here.
Any other questions? Okay.
All right. Moving on in your packet. The next one, when you look at, at the top says current attendance zones, Hare Grove, Lee, and Owens. Looking at your chart of Hare Grove, Lee, and Owens, we need to clean up some feeder patterns here. And this is one of those deals where we've, you know, you look at a map and you say, why is that little chunk knocked out down on the bottom? Well, at the time, we were needing to move students to a particular school and we had to pull students. Now's the time to fix that. If, if you're looking at your chart, you see Hare Grove, Lee, and Owens. Owens is currently at 123% of utilization. Hare Grove's at 88 and Lee's at 82. So Lee and Hare Grove both do have room. Owens, even though Owens is at 123%, I'll go into a little later while we're not making a recommendation to move more students than is on this, the list. But you can see that Owens does need some relief. And we're giving them a small amount of relief with this recommendation. What, if you look at the map, again, Owens is the purple area. Hare Grove is kind of the light green. And Lee is the dark green to the south. Again, the black dots or black squares are the schools. You can see where Jack Rabbit Road is, where Owens sits on. North Eldridge comes right down the middle of the map where Hare Grove is located. And then further down to the south is West Le York to the south, and you have Lee. And then further down, you get the 520, or in between Hare Grove and Lee, you've got 529. So that's kind of, you put your bearings on your map. So the areas that we're talking about rezoning or the areas that are shaded, again, with the yellow outline, there's one to the north in the Owens area and one to the south currently in the Hare Grove area. The proposed boundary change map would look like this. Again, Owens would be purple. Hare Grove would be in the light green and Lee in the dark green. Estancia San Miguel Apartments on West Road is the only part of Owens that attends Truett and then attends Cy Ridge. The remainder of Owens attends Libye and Cy Falls. So they're kind of a little anomaly and there are very few students in that, in that apartment complex. I think, I think there was around 10, there were six to 10 students in that apartments. So they, we propose that Estancia San Miguel move to Hare Grove. We also propose moving the section of Concord Bridge that currently attends Hare Grove to Lee, which is the southern part. This would unite the entire Concord Bridge subdivision. So if you look, and Blanca will point out what is Concord Bridge. That whole green area to the bottom is Concord Bridge. But when you look on your old map, that little piece that we're showing that we suggest to move is also Concord Bridge. But those students currently go to Hare Grove. So we propose to move those students from Hare Grove to Lee to unite the Concord Bridge community. And Hare Grove can certainly handle those students. At this time, the recommendation, with the recommendation of the principal, we did, as Ms. Hall had discussed, we did speak with the principals on all these to get their input. And we had considered moving additional kids from, from Owens into Hare Grove to balance the growth. But with the recommendation of the principal at this time, she suggested we not move any additional students as it would divide a community. And she felt that she could handle that amount of population. She does have portables on her campus. And she said the way that she has her campus set up, she has her pre-K and kindergarten areas in portables. And that's the way that she preferred to keep them. And she asked us not to make any additional moves of students out of Owens into Hare Grove. So if you look at, look at the map, the aerial, you can kind of see they're outlined in red. To the top is the apartment complex we're talking about. There's actually, on either side of the street, there are different complexes. The ones we would plan to move are Estancia San Miguel. And again, we would be moving those from Owens to Hare Grove. Those students currently go to Truett and to Cy Ridge. And again, as I stated, most of Owens goes to Libye and Cy Falls. So they're the only students who do not follow that feeder pattern. So this would be correcting a feeder pattern. And again, and then again, in the south is the Concord Bridge area, which would be reuniting that community. And you see by doing that, what the, what the numbers would do, all those schools would be able to handle that, that change in enrollment. Any questions?
Okay.
Okay.
Go forward.
We're almost there. We're getting there. The next one in your packet is Hancock and Moore. Hancock is another campus that's in need of relief. The chart that you're looking at does not take into account special programs. So the numbers are skewed on that chart. But we'll show you an additional chart that will correct those numbers with special programs. So if you look at the chart, you're going to see that currently for 2014, Hancock's at 162% and Moore's at 105%. So you think we have to relieve Hancock, which we do need to relieve Hancock. It's not actually at 162% because of some special programs where students attend other campuses. We propose, the, the next map shows you the current zones of Hancock and Moore. The areas in yellow are the areas that we would propose moving from Hancock to Moore. And then the next map shows you what that map would look like if we did that. The proposed areas would include Mandolin Apartments, Palacio at Cypresswood Apartments, and Villages of Cypress Creek Apartments, which would move from Hancock to Moore. Again, the chart shows the enrollment minus the resident students who do not attend Hare Grove and Moore because of special programs. So if you can put that other chart up, Blanca, this one?
Yes.
This is a short, chart, charts, excuse me, that shows those three apartment complexes and what the enrollment would do as a result of that move. And you can see the capacities are listed, the current enrollment. And you can see if, if the enrollment, it shows that Hancock would be 1272. But that's actually minus 226 students who are residents who actually do not attend because they either attend Jaeger or Matske. And then to the south, again, Moore has 40 students that do not attend Moore because of special programs.
Could you explain why they don't attend Hancock, why they go to Jaeger and Matske? Is that the bilingual program?
Yes.
Yes. We currently have 226 students that are out of the Hancock zone that attend Jaeger. And it's a pre-K and a bilingual program that they attend Jaeger. And then Moore Elementary doesn't have a bilingual program. And so they have 40 students that would attend Matske.
So when you look at the numbers, you can see for, with the projected enrollment for the boundary changes we propose, Hancock would, if resident students minus those students who we know don't attend, would be 1,046. And Moore would be 1,098. And both of those campuses could handle those students. Even though they are slightly over their projected capacities or their capacities, they should not have a problem handling those students. So if you'll put that last aerial map up of that area.
Share that Hancock has nine portables.
Right. And Hancock already has nine portables that they're currently using. And Moore does not have any portables. So if we needed to, we could move some portables into Moore if we, if it was necessary.
But Hancock will need to keep all of them.
Any questions on, on that one?
Anybody? Okay, let's keep moving.
All right. This one is going to be kind of like the Gleason, Cook, Dean scenario. This is the same, the same group of kids again. Your Blile-Hamilton area. We recommend that we move all of the Moore attendant zone from Blile to Hamilton, including three apartment complexes that we just mentioned. There would be attending Moore from Hancock along with Anderson Woods, Cypress Forest 2, Norchester north of Cypress, Cypresswood Drive, O'Callow and Stonegate Villas. Currently, we only have 11% of Moore that goes on to Blile. So it would make all, 100% of Moore would then follow on to, to Hamilton and then on to Cy Creek. Under the proposed recommendation, they would all attend Hamilton with their peers. So you can look at the numbers. Again, Blile next year is projected 101%, Hamilton at 96. In the proposed, it would be Blile 94% and Hamilton at 103%. And we feel comfortable that both of those schools can handle those projections.
And in a couple of those areas, it is important for you to know, we've had requests. That's an example of a small group of students that were already zoned to, that went to Moore but then followed the Blile feeder pattern. And they have requested in the past to be zoned to Hamilton. So we're kind of addressing a request that we've received, but also helping to balance some enrollments.
Correct. We've received quite a few requests for this, along with the same request out of the Cook-Dean request for those changes to be made.
Is that, is that area south? Well, on this map, I'll, I'll wait till you get to the, the green map.
This one?
Yeah.
That's, that's the overhead or the aerial of that?
Is that area next, I guess, south of Cypress Forest? Is that, that's Norchester, right?
That's Norchester.
Norchester proper?
Correct.
The original one?
There's, there's two.
They'll still go Matske and Blile or?
They're split already. That northern part already goes to Moore. That was split several years ago.
Wait, I was, I was talking about.
He's talking middle, you're talking middle school?
Well, I was talking about the area.
Here.
That, that square, so to speak.
They currently attend Blile.
Matske-Blile, you're correct, Dawn. They attend Matske-Blile.
Yeah, that's what I said. And then you said.
I'm sorry, I thought you were talking, thinking that we were moving the, the northern part. I didn't let you finish. I apologize.
It's all right. It's all right. Okay, I just, when you said Norchester, then everyone lumps all that area together.
Yes, Norchester north of Cypresswood Drive.
Okay. And they all?
They currently in elementary, they, they currently are in, that's that group of students that's, that's Anderson Woods and that whole group that's requesting that change into the Moore-Hamilton zone.
Okay. And then they'd all go from Moore to Hamilton to Creek?
To Creek.
It's already split.
Okay. Yeah, we've heard about that area in the past of some dissatisfaction.
They request every year to make that move.
And we have a petition of 106 signatures.
Any other questions? I think that, that was the last one.
Wow.
That's why I like what? One third?
And we can get those, those numbers of subdivisions, see, see? So you can look at the actual numbers in each of those different subdivisions we're talking about.
I think on everything that we looked at tonight, if we could do that.
Yeah, we can do that.
That would be great.
Okay.
Darcy?
There's, there's just one question I have. Looking at most of the changes, it looks like most of the time, geographically, students that are being moved are actually going to be closer.
Yes.
To their elementary. If there are some areas that that's not true, and there look like there were a couple of them, maybe something in that Gleason area, could you let us know that and the difference in mileage?
Okay, like the, the students we're talking about, maybe from Moore, from Hancock to Moore?
No, I was, I thought I saw Moore in the Gleason.
The Gleason area, okay.
Yeah.
The Gleason Reed area.
I just wanted.
Give you the distance from, they're currently traveling to elementary, what's the proposed elementary?
Yes, that's exactly it.
Right. Okay.
Thank you, Marty and Stacy and Blanca, everybody that was involved. I know that was a, was a long process, but it's, I think in the long run, it's going to be really beneficial to the students and the community. So thank you. Agenda item 7C, the board will discuss on a proposed bond study process. Ms. Hall and Dr. Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. This, this evening, and we'll try to go as quickly as possible because certainly we want to be good stewards of your time. And I know after that presentation, that can jumble up your brain a little bit by trying to keep up with all the neighborhoods. But we'd like, Teresa and I are going to make a presentation to you this evening. And you can. you can see on the screen over there, we're titling it, and you have the handout with you also, the overheads at your place there. We're titling this 2020 Vision, and it's a long-range planning process. And as I mentioned a moment ago, as you see all of the rezoning options that we're going through, you can see that this district continues to grow. If we were a fairly stable population as far as growth, a lot of this would not be necessary, but we continue to be a very popular place for people to relocate to. Our school age population in this district continues to grow by, on average, 2,000 new students a year. 2,000 students a year when you have 112 may not seem like that many, but one little statistic that I can give you, there are over 700 school districts in the state of Texas with less than 2,000 students in the entire district. So we grow, other than maybe Frisco and Katy, we're probably right in there among the top three fastest-growing districts in the state. Our goal with this presentation tonight is, we have been working towards involving our community in evaluating the need and the scope of a bond issue. As many of you were on the board six years ago, when the last bond election was held, I believe, and I certainly can be corrected by some of the folks that were here, like Teresa and Roy and Stuart may remember, but it was a five-year projection at that time for monies available. But as you recall, the economy inside the state of Texas and throughout the country went through the Great Recession, as it was called, and many of the building projects at that time had to be delayed. But again, we're picking back up, and although we still have money available to build facilities, new facilities, the continued growth in the area, along with needs in several other areas, need to be addressed. So what we would like to do as an administrative, or our recommendation, or what we'd like to do is proceed on with a committee. And the committee's purpose, as you can see on the screen, would be to set the parameters and establish procedures. We'd like to research community attitudes and perceptions, evaluate input and needs in identified areas, involve the community in developing a long-range plan recommendation, develop a consensus for a long-range plan recommendation, and then ultimately make that recommendation to the Board of Trustees. The charge through this process, the committee will develop a long-range plan recommendation that, and you can read the bullet points there where we consider the educational needs of our students. The four major areas that we would like to touch on, to paraphrase everything that is on the overhead there, is we see that there are four areas that we need to address as a school district. None of them will be a surprise to you. Security, although certainly we know, and statistically it's proven, that the safest place for a child to be is in a, in school. We do know that with the recent high-profile events that have occurred in the state and across this country, we can never be too vigilant to make sure that our students and staff are taken care of. So there are many things that we feel like we need to address, not only with our buildings, but also with added security measures such as cameras and other needs to make sure that our campuses and facilities are the safest, as safe as they can be. The next area that we have, feel like there is a strong need for a committee to take a look at is technology. Again, if you go back to 2007, there was, I believe it was $70 or $80 million included in that bond program for technology, but when you have 112,000 students and as fast as technology is changing, we not only have some instructional needs, we have some infrastructure needs, as we would like to involve students or include in their education where they can bring their own devices to school. In all honesty, our system is not, we don't have enough, and again, I'd have to defer to Frankie to get to the exact terminology, but we don't have enough capacity to even address adding some technology to our instructional side that we would like to. So there are certainly a lot of issues that need to be addressed there. Transportation. One of the things that we would like to do, and you've heard about some of these lately, is we would like to restore transportation to the level of service offered prior to the 2009, 2010 school year to include the majority of students that live within two miles of the assigned schools. So we would like to return the bus service like it used to be. Again, in a growing district where we know there is a lot of construction going on and a lot of changes at all times, we do, we would like to restore bus service, but obviously that requires additional, not only buses, but possibly even facility to support those buses. So that's another major area. And then finally, one that you've addressed in past bond elections is growth and renovation. This district has a long history of continuing to take a look at the buildings that have been here the longest and continue to upgrade those facilities so that they're equal to our new facilities. So that's the renovation end of that that we would like to continue with. And then obviously, when you're adding 2,000 or so students a year, there is a need for growth. We also have some district facilities that need to be addressed. By 2017, more than likely, we will have 12 5A high schools. When you have 11 5A high schools, you're no longer allowed to play in the same UIL district, whether it be athletics, academics, fine arts. We at least need to have a committee to start planning for that. I know that seems like a long time from now, but it's really only three years to when we will have to start organizing our student activities in a different way because of two UIL districts. And then just to be clear on this, because I did have a patron say, or you saying we've got to split Cyfair ISD up? No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying it'll be Cypress Fairbanks ISD, but we'll have to be in two different UIL districts for all activities. So I just want to make sure I'm clear on that. So there are some district facilities that we would love for this committee to take a look at and see if they need to be addressed. You know, it's my pleasure, I went to Debbie Blackshear a couple of months ago, and I asked Debbie if we proceeded with this long-range committee, if she'd be willing to serve as the chair. Most of you know Debbie. Debbie's recently retired from the Cyfair Credit Union after a 28-year career, serving the last 18 years as president. Debbie and her husband have lived in Cyfair community for 35 years, and their two sons, Jason and Jeremy, attended Lampkin, Arnold, and Cyfair High School. They have five grandchildren, three of whom are school-aged, Brooke, Brandon, and McKenzie, and they attend Seards Middle School, Alton Swinkie. And although Debbie is retired, those of you in this room know she continues to remain extremely active in our community and district. She currently serves on the Cyfair Houston Chamber of Commerce, Board of Directors, the Cyfair Educational Foundation, Board of Trustees, the CyHope Board of Directors, the President's Advisory Committee of Lone Star College Cyfair, and the CFISD Community Leadership Committee. In fact, she had retired to do all of these things. It was taking up so much of her time. It is also important to note that Debbie has served on several bond study committees, including 2004 and 2007 Bond Steering Committees. Debbie combines intellect, excellent communication skills, and unquestionable integrity with a passion for students and public education. And you know, I just feel honored and so fortunate that Debbie is willing to take on this task, and I can tell you, I've been here two and a half years, and it doesn't take long for Debbie to become one of your heroes, and certainly she is one of my community heroes, and I appreciate her willingness to do that. The committee structure will be very similar to the past, and many of you have served on those committees, and of course, have served on the board while those committees functioned. There will be approximately 50 members, and members will include parents, staff and business and community members. We want the committee to reflect the geographic and demographic diversity of the district. And the committee's recommendation, as you can see by the title that we put forward, should meet the district's needs for the next six years. That's why we have 2020 Vision down. We not only think that's catchy, we think that taking us through the year 2020 is a reasonable expectation. As this community is used to Cyfair ISD operating, any bond issue will be fiscally conservative. Consideration will be given to all needs before establishing priorities. We want the committee to also evaluate and prioritize needs based on the established goal and charge of the process. There are two election dates now, some things that have changed probably since 2007. There are only two approved election dates now for bond elections, and that is in May or November. Certainly, as the committee moves through this process, if they see the need to come and present to this board a bond program, and this board approves to go forward, the date of that election will be important if it's in May. Some of the areas that I have addressed up to this point could start being solved in the 14, 15 school year. If we have to move that back to November, then this board will have to make some decisions related to budget priorities for 2014, 15, because many of the things that we are going to present to the committee are, they're not necessarily options. They're things that have to be addressed, and they'll either have to be addressed through the debt service, or they'll have to be addressed through the M&amp;O tax rate. Couple of those that I've mentioned, of course, are security and technology. We certainly need to make sure that we're moving forward with those. Just so this board knows and the community knows, this is not something that just popped in someone's head between Thanksgiving and Christmas. We've been working on this as an administrative team since school started, and actually, if you want to be honest, all the way back to last year, because again, we're in the seventh year of the 2007 bond program now, which was designed to cover five years. So there's a little bit of catching up to do, and we hope to work with the committee and show them where we think the needs are. And then, of course, I'm a big believer in that the Cyfair schools belong to this community, and it belongs to the parents and taxpayers of this community and the children of this community, and we'll be respectful with whatever direction that the committee directs us to go towards as we bring something forward to the board. Having said that, I'd like to turn it over to Teresa. And Teresa, if you would just very quickly kind of run through the timeline?
As Dr. Henry shared with you, we started this process several months ago of really trying to look at the needs across the district. Part of that included the reorganization that took place when Mr. Sprague was named as the Associate Superintendent over facilities and construction and maintenance and all of those transportation areas. He started the process of developing, trying to evaluate the needs of his areas. And so really, he put a plan together to start assessing all of the facilities in October, and actually, he's completed the majority of that, but October through December, there was discussions, obviously, of this long-range plan. But in October, he distributed facility questionnaires to all of our principals and administrators to complete about, you know, really needs on their campus, be it maintenance or potential renovations or changes, including security. And then he also scheduled architects to begin conducting walkthroughs and assessments of all of our district facilities, including all the campuses and support facilities. And a timeline has been scheduled to complete those and conduct meetings through January Obviously, we have started the process of organizing the committee with Debbie Blackshear being named as the chair, and we'll start the process of identifying members for that within the next couple of weeks. As I go through the remainder of this timeline, we've put together a proposed timeline that would actually put us with the ability, if the committee makes that recommendation to the board, to present possibly for a bond recommendation for a May election. So it may seem like, oh my gosh, that's very quick, but I need you to keep in mind that a lot of the work has already been done as far as assessment of facilities and looking and evaluating the needs across the district. And many times through the bond steering process, that step does not incur until the committee has actually been formed. And we've been working and doing that over the last couple of months. The other thing that's going to be a slight different organization of the committee that we discussed and we thought would be very positive is that we're not going to be breaking off into individual subcommittees. The division into the subcommittees does require, obviously, additional time, but I think what is lost is a knowledge of all of the areas of need for the entire committee. And it is our recommendation that we keep the committee of approximately 50 members together through the entire process and educate them on all of the areas so that they can make an informed recommendation in all areas. So that is going to actually even help our process. The first committee meeting that we have actually put down as a, the first Long Range Planning Committee will be on January 7th. And at this first committee meeting, we will actually discuss this process and timeline, share with them our demographic information, go through, pass, and that's another piece of information that we've been provided prior to starting this process. The in-depth, comprehensive demographic study that Passa presented to you in May provided us with all of those projections through 2022. So we know what the potential growth for our district is. And so that's another piece that's been done ahead of the formation of this committee. We would turn around and tentatively begin the process of the next meeting of actually jumping right in and providing information to the committee on the safety and security, technology, and transportation needs and new campuses needed. Again, keep in mind, we've been working on all of this and feel like we're way ahead in evaluating the needs in those areas. The next meeting that would be conducted would do the facilities assessment report that the architects are working on at this time, and the major projects that we would like to propose to the committee to consider. And that would happen in the third meeting. The fourth meeting would then involve sharing with the committee if we decided to move forward with a recommendation for a bond proposal, any tax and financial information and priorities for a possible scenario for a bond. And then the next meeting at the end of that month, we would meet with the committee to reevaluate those proposed scenarios and see if any changes are needed. Throughout the process, and again, it would be a recommendation and a decision that we would work with the committee depending on, after really evaluating the needs and the proposals that we share with them, if they feel that we need to gather more input, solicit input from the community, it could be done with online surveys or telephone surveys. I know that in the past, the district has worked with Bob Stein out of Rice University. So there's a number of ways, and obviously, I think technology and social media have actually provide new outlets for us to solicit input and feedback from our community on their perceptions for the needs that we've identified. We would also recommend to the committee that through this process, prior to determining a possible bond recommendation, that we conduct an open forum meeting in order to actually hear from community members face to face. The next meeting would be to vote on a long-range plan, to present to the Board of Trustees, and whether that is, you know, a bond proposal or not, we do feel that the committee's charge is to develop a plan to address those areas, long-range, that we have identified. February 13th, we would present that plan to the Board of Trustees, and if that did include calling for a bond election, the latest date that we could actually call, have the board approve or call for an election in order to hold a May election is February 28th. So it would require a special-called meeting on February 27th. So, it would require a special-called meeting on February 27th in order for the board to make that decision and meet the timeline for a May election. The next slides, the next slide and the two items there, again, would only occur if the recommendation of the committee is to propose a bond. But through that process of March and May, we would be working, as you know in the past, to develop informational materials and conduct meetings to educate the public about the process. And it would be our recommendation, even throughout the process, of looking at the identified areas as the committee's meeting to utilize every opportunity we can to share that information with our community and remain as transparent through the process as possible. And again, I think compared to other bond study steering committee processes, the social media and our ability to post on Facebook, people, the use of the website and their availability of information is much different than it was in the past. So, I think we're going to be able to keep our community very informed about the processes we go through. And then, of course, if the recommendation is to hold the bond election, that would be conducted on May 10th. So, I think there are some definite benefits, as Dr. Henry pointed out. One benefit of going with the May election is the ability, if it's approved, for many of the items to be started in the 1415 school year. The other thing that we talked about internally quite a bit in looking at the difference in a May versus November election is that in looking at even the timelines that we've used in the past, really, you completely lose June, July, and August in the process. There's really nothing going on during that time. Families, communities are disengaged. We could even show you data of the drop in people accessing our website and information. I mean, that's just to be expected during the summer months. And then, with school not starting until late in August, you know that September, the majority of our community is focused on getting ready and getting schools started in early September. So, with the November election, really, all we would gain in that process would be possibly October, because it would be an early November election. And again, I think things are a little bit different in our ability to get the information out. There's just so many more avenues to keep the community informed and knowledgeable about this process as we go through. So, I just wanted to point those things out, because those are things we did consider as we developed the proposed timeline. So, I really do welcome your feedback and any suggestions and ideas that you may have or things that you would like for us to consider as we start this process. Again, our goal is to conduct that first meeting on January 7th and go from there. So.
Any questions from board members? Go ahead, John.
We sure have the security needs, and that's very important, but also the transportation needs. And there is a community that has made a request to us in relationship to transportation. I thought that we were going to address some of those transportation needs, but are you saying that we will have to wait to a bond election before we can make any changes to our transportation the way we do it now?
Well, let me answer that before Roy does, and I'll let Roy give more details. The answer is, and what I was kind of leading towards, is that there are some changes that we will have to make, whether the committee or whether the board chooses to go forward with the bond election or not. And that's where the decision comes in of how we will pay for those changes. So, any changes that we make to transportation will affect the budget for the 1415 school year and our proposals to you on the M&amp;O side. So, the answer is, no, we don't have to wait on a bond election to address some of those concerns. But if we don't address some of those concerns with some type of bond proposal, then they'll have to be funded from our maintenance and operations account. And Roy, anything to add to that? Or Stuart, if I say anything wrong, correct me.
As part of that, we would probably have to do a combination of purchasing new buses as well as do some recommissioning of existing buses that we have that we use for other purposes to do that. And the time to implement that, we need a lot of planning time with our department to try to implement that over the next six months or so to get it ready for the 201415 school year. So, we need some planning time with our teams to implement that. But we would need additional buses in order to accomplish that goal, to reduce the two-mile rule back to the previous service level that we had.
And just to add to that also, Dr. Ogletree, I can assure you that all the way to last spring, we were already talking about the issue of trying to restore transportation. So, it has been on the forefront of our minds on trying to figure out how we can do that fiscally, responsibly.
Also, the 50 members for this committee, are they presently being selected? And are board members, are we to suggest members to?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Ogletree, and I apologize for not mentioning that. Absolutely. As we shared in the presentation, it's our goal to make certain that the committee is really a good geographical and demographic representation of our district. And we would love for you to provide some recommendations to us. And then, in meeting as a planning team, and then, obviously, involving Debbie as our Chair of the Committee, sitting down and then looking at all those recommendations to make sure that we achieve that goal of the geographic and demographic representation of our district, both ethnically and age-wise, making sure that we represent all the different age groups in our community.
Great questions, Dr. O. Bob?
Just, I think probably a clarification, and that is, and I've heard this periodically, and it's kind of a misunderstanding by community members, and that is, when we set up a bond, there are specific details that that bond addresses, and you can't take the monies from one bond to use on something else. You have to use it for what you specified those monies for. Is that not correct?
Let Stuart answer that.
Stuart?
Well, the bond orders are written such that it gives a little bit of flexibility in terms of the projects, but certainly, the bond money itself, when we sell the bonds, can only be used for what is specified in those bond orders that the voters have approved. When we sell bonds, we cannot use that money for supplies, materials, salaries, benefits, and that sort of thing. It has to go toward those specific projects that we've identified in that bond program.
Because I had heard people saying, well, if you've got extra money on a bond, why don't you put it in your maintenance and operations? And you can't do that.
No, we can't.
Thank you. Thank you, Bob. Johnny, you have another question?
Yes, just, and I don't know if this is, it would be helpful in this process, but if we had an idea of what is left on the last bond, what still remains, the funds, and also, I think as we move forward on this project, if the community and if we were able to look at what all we accomplished, what all we did do with that, I think it will help in moving forward.
I think that one of the plans for topics of discussion with that steering committee is to review the bond projects that we've been able to accomplish out of the 2004 and specifically, and including the 2007 bond election. We currently have about $35 million remaining in the 2004 bond election that is unencumbered. In other words, all of the projects that were specified and approved by the voters in the 2004 election have been completed. And so, that's additional money that we've been kind of holding our powder dry on that and waiting to sell that money, because if you recall, we have, as Dr. Henry mentioned, we have had the money to build the facilities, but not really opened the facilities over the past several years. And so, we've had to move all of the new construction projects that were identified in 2007 bond election back to the later years and then focus on the renovation projects in the earlier years. And by doing that, we were anticipating some additional inflationary cost increases. And so, we were hoping that we would save the remaining money in the 2004 to be able to cover a lot of the inflationary cost increases that would incur because of the delay of the new construction. We have about a little over $400 million left in the 2007 bond election, so a total of about $430, $440 million left in total. The 2007 bond, remaining $400 million in the 2007 bond is being planned for the construction of High School 11 as well as High School 12. And so, in fact, we're working, I'm working right now on a bond sale that will take place in early spring, probably in February, to sell the money necessary to fund High School 11, as well as the design fees for High School 12. So, that's in summary where we are with the existing bond funds.
Any additional questions from board members?
If I could, Don, add one thing, and if you don't mind, Stuart, I'd rather you say this, because I think you'll say it much clearer than I can. But of the money that we have left for 2007, the money cannot be used for transportation. It cannot be used for technology, because it was specified that it would be for new facilities and?
Right. The, in the 2007 bond election, we did specify a certain amount of money for construction of new facilities, a certain amount of money for technology, and a certain amount of money for transportation. The bonds that have been sold from the 2007 have already been funded. Those projects in the technology and the transportation projects that were specified in 2007 have already been completed. Well, the money has been sold and spent. So, there are no remaining funds to fund any other additional technology projects or transportation projects out of the 2007 bond election. Was that clear enough?
That's what I was.
Okay. Dr. Henry, Teresa, Stuart, everybody involved, thank you for that report. And I think I'm pretty comfortable speaking on behalf of the board. Debbie, I'm thrilled that you're co-chairing this process. You are such an advocate for public education, and I know that with you at the Chair, things will go swimmingly. So, thank you for doing that. It means a lot. I will skip a little bit and let you know, the superintendent's briefing portion of the agenda will be presented Monday evening. And then, also, on Monday evening, just a reminder that the regular board meeting scheduled for Monday, December 9th, 2013, will be held at the Berry Educational Support Center. Agenda item 7D, the board will discuss the superintendent's evaluation for the 2012-2013 school year. This item may be discussed in closed session pursuant to Section 551.074. May I have a motion to go into closed session, please?
So, move.
Motion, Mr. Covey?
Second.
Second, Dr. Ogletree, all those in favor? Thank you. We'll be in there probably just a few minutes, right, Teresa? I'll tell you, that's a yes. And then, we'll return, but we have no other business to conduct out front tonight other than the journey. So, thank you, guys, for attending tonight, and have a great evening.